Anybody else get a funny email today? Emergency, this is Ben Nadolsky, don't call. Keep radio silence.
Give me some gift cards.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. It it got me.
Oh, no.
I I just replied and I just said. I'm here Ben thinking he was gonna reach out and then I thought. We just got that cyber bit. I didn't click anything except reply. And then I went back, I was gonna forward it to you. And they had disappeared. They were gone from my. I'm sure they were.
And it did look funny, so I didn't reply to that one. I started a new one. And sent him and said, could you just send me an email by the blog? And I got a response that said, just click on that thing. So they were like.
They were in the system.
They were like live in the system. And I mean, it freaked me out.
Wow.
It wasn't just a bot, it was a person.
So the camera situation, the camera's not responding, and so this is what our people will see. Which is less than ideal, but I mean, this could be worse, I suppose.
Really?
I can't like. It's not taking that input, it's not.
It's seeing this, the lights go on.
Gremlins.
Wow.
He checked everything before.
Of course. All right, are we, we're good over here and is Marcia on? Marcia, can you hear us? You cannot hear us, okay. That's okay, I think she'll be joining us shortly, so let's go ahead and get started. If that's okay, Brandon, if there's anything we need to wait at all.
We're good, I didn't, well, actually, we're not streaming.
Okay, we'll be streaming here shortly.
It was, it was all on.
Mm hmm.
They should have been ready.
All right. Welcome to the 5:00 PM joint work session for the Ogden City Council and also the redevelopment agency. We have all council member present except Vice Chair White, who should be joining us online. And we just have, we just returned from a field trip to the US Forest Service Building and. First up on our. Work session, we have Tracy Hanson, our city recorder, here to come and talk to us about some proposed election and campaign amendments. Welcome.
Thank you. As you guys know, from your packet, in 2009, Ogden adopted some changes to campaign, the Campaign Finance Ordinance. And since that time, there have been quite a few changes to state statutes related to campaign finance. That have been enacted, so that has made a very complex system of rules and compliance states that we're struggling to. To keep up with and help candidates know what the requirements are, so we're seeking to simplify the system by aligning our code with state code. Where it meets Ogden's needs. And and the hope is to make this easier for election officials and for candidates to comply. So a few of the. Changes include. Ogden has finance reporting dates that were different than the states, this led to an extra report. For Ogden, kind of in between, that didn't seem to fill a need, I think it might have been left over from. From paper ballots, so it kind of. It seemed unnecessary, it seemed redundant, so. So it would align Ogden's dates with the state's dates. Ogden requires candidates to file a personal campaign finance committee, they have to create a committee before they can accept or disperse funds. The only way that this campaign closes is that if they. Put in writing that they'd like the campaign committee closed, otherwise they have to report, candidates have to report from their last. Report, whether that was four years ago and then and explain all of their. Expenditures and. Contributions in between, but that's specific to Ogden and this would eliminate that. Ogden does not allow anonymous contributions of any type. So that everybody, candidates have to report all of the contributions they receive, no matter how small. But that would change with the alignment to state code. Additions would be advertisement disclosure mandates that any advertisements have to have the responsible candidate's name on them. This exists in state code, but it seems to that it only applied to state candidates. So Ogden would add that into their code to make that a requirement. And then use of city employees in campaign material. Campaign, employees are prohibited from campaigning while while working. And so. The changes would help clarify. What they can and can't do, also candidates cannot use photos of employees without their permission. Or if the employee is in uniform, which has been. A concern with Facebook pages, with social media, somebody might be serving. As a council member or a mayor or city official of some type, they have pictures at events where they're with firefighters or with police officers, but then they change that account. To an election account during election season, and now they have all these pictures. With city employees, firefighters or police, and it could appear that those people are endorsing them. On city time in city uniform, so we just want to be able to. Help candidates know about those rules and those concerns. Excuse me, it also provides. A penal, there's penalties that are allowed, but there's no provisions that allow a reasonable amount of time for a candidate to correct something. So somebody calls and says, hey, this candidate did ABC. And we call them, they say, I'll fix it right now, and they fix it. There isn't a procedure for that or anything that allows us to give them time to fix that. So some of these changes would give a reasonable amount of time for correction and compliance regarding a violation. And that covers the basics of what. What this ordinance is proposing, we feel like it's a starting point. Our goal is to simplify, so we're open to discussion or. Changes or things you don't want removed or. Et cetera, that type of thing, and I try to answer any questions, Katie's also here to help answer questions if I can't.
I've got, this is a question, because I'm in the middle of this situation right now, and I'm thinking about the social media situation and. I guess, it's kind of challenging for me because it's not really an official, like the city or the council don't manage my personal. Camp, campaign page or a personal page, obviously, so I'm just thinking about logistics for that, so. You're kind of suggesting that if you change to a campaign account, then you would go back and delete all those photos unless you got permission from people, I mean, so. Council members, even if you're running for your council seat again. You might be changing that. Feedback and forth between those things, and I, you know, it plainly says in like the description that it's. A campaign account, I don't know, I guess I just, I'm thinking through how people would deal with that.
It's been a big issue in the records world, because. City employees are not allowed to campaign, so it's more the employees that are going to be in trouble. Not not necessarily that you have a picture with the firefighters, but the firefighters could be, you know, like, somebody could say, why were you on city time campaigning? As an example, so. Yeah, I'm not sure if people then take the photos down for that time period, if they hide them, or if they just maintain two separate accounts, but then you have all your followers already. So that becomes an issue too.
That is one, I guess I'm trying to think of a way you can put a disclaimer in the. You know, description of the page. That just seems, I mean, I'm not trying to be a winner, but that would be a lot of work to go back and delete.
It would, yes.
All these pictures.
And and this wasn't something that came up a few years ago, you know, it's it's been more recent with social media, that type of thing.
I don't know if anybody else is concerned about that, if you have a lot of social media.
Well, I I just kind of wondered, I. I'm not the biggest social media guru, as a matter of fact, I'm a, I'm a real nerd.
Yeah, I would probably blow it on accident.
You know, and, well, I wouldn't, because I barely use social media, but. It would kind of seem reasonable to set up a separate. Campaign page. And keep your. I I do have a council member page, sell them, get on it, but. Keep that for for your council business stuff and and have a separate one for, and and you can do that, right, you can, you can have multiple. Facebook pages for different purposes, can't you?
I don't.
You still might be on a tour of the Wonder Block. With. The mayor.
Right.
And that photograph appears on your campaign.
And your personal.
Baseball page.
That, that, you have to be careful not to post that stuff.
Yeah, well, if you're. Communicate with your.
Constituents.
Constituency, we went and looked at the Wonder Block and you don't necessarily feature the mayor, but the mayor is there on your shoulders, like, oh, the mayor is patting Rich on the back, I guess.
I guess he supports him or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, they can draw a conclusion.
Okay, I I guess I'm kind of getting up. Probably not gonna be an issue for me, I will never.
Other people could do it on, on your behalf or something.
I think, I see, I see what you're saying, you're saying. You have, I mean, there's a difference between. Angela Chaburka for City Council and Councilmember Angela Chaburka, right?
Right, right now, they're the same page.
As council member, you have, you post, you you go into events and you post those things on there, but that's. Just by changing the title doesn't mean all those pictures go away also, so yeah, I agree, that's, I think there should be some type of. Almost like a. Well, these were posted before, I, you know, like.
Timeline.
He's gonna ask Katie, what do you think, if it would be possible to just put like, as of.
Yeah, you can't.
You know, October 1st, 2024, or. You can't post them.
Yeah, I think we could write something like that into there, that would be, I think, a reasonable alternative. I don't, well, we could, we'll probably want to look into it, but I I don't see any legal concerns with that.
I just want, I mean, we, it's hard to see in the future these different types of social media, I'm definitely not a tech person, so please take everything I'm saying, you know, with a grain of salt, but. They have all these posts posting now and all these other sites and everything, it's very complicated.
I mean, I'm guessing it's something that. Congresspeople do, that the legislators do, so, I mean, we're just trying to protect the employees, but that seems like it could be an alternative.
Some kind of statement, I don't know.
So we're gonna, right now, we, we, Ogden City doesn't allow any anonymous donations, but we're going to allow anonymous donations, anonymous donations up to.
Fifty dollars.
What the, just because that's the state code or?
Just because it's state code, purely just kind of, kind of resetting, I don't. For me, it's simpler if it follows state code as close as possible, but I don't necessarily have opinions about what it should be, so if there's feelings about it.
And I haven't read through the whole thing yet, but is it up to fifty dollars, is it fifty dollars and above that you would have to report the person's name?
I thought, I think it says a fifty dollar limit per year, I think is how it words it, but but I could get.
So I was spending deep in the weeds on this right now.
Fifty dollars and one penny, you report the name, fifty dollars, it's anonymous, yeah.
So I think also if somebody did, I mean, you would know who gave you that money, and so if they gave you twenty five dollars one time and twenty five dollars another time. That hits the fifty dollars, if they gave you twenty five dollars and thirty, you'd have to report, so I think it's a combined total as well, it's not just.
Not at one time.
Tracy, I do have a question, and I'm, you know, maybe, maybe you talked about it, I don't know, but. Third party. Campaigning, you know, maybe they're not. They 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 do a, maybe they run a mailer, maybe they run something and and it's not, and it exceeds the limit of of a contribution. How does that affect? Anything?
So somebody's giving you an in-kind donation, but.
They're not even talking to me, let's say they're just not, they didn't even talk to me. Yeah, they said, you know, I really don't like that person that hires running against, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, I'm not even gonna talk to him. I mean, it happens nationally all the time.
It happened at the last.
And I think it has happened locally and. But it does seem to violate the spirit of our rules. But I don't know how you deal with it. But it's not from that person's campaign account.
I mean.
That's why we're asking that candidates would have to include their names, so. I'm not sure what we do in the situation where if you're the candidate and somebody else writes a letter out to everybody because they want you to win, but you didn't know anything about it, I'm.
Well, that's, that's where this gets sticky in my mind.
I'm just a little bit confused, so how do they give you money if you don't know about it?
They don't, they don't give me money, they just.
Oh, they just do the advertising.
They're campaigning for me.
That's addressed in the state rules, but it wouldn't apply to us that they have to actually file their own disclosures, so we could include that if you want to, I think it just applies to state elections, but I could double check that.
Well, it's, it's a pack, yeah, that's what it is.
They have to report it, but it's not on yours.
But it's not on the candidate, it's, it's the people who do did the mailer, they would be the required reporting party.
I think that's especially prevalent when there's like something negative that's going on, and like, I don't. I mean, I don't know what the situation is, sometimes the candidate, it's like they wouldn't want to necessarily be associated with it, because they don't, they they wouldn't be negative like that, but this pack is being negative or something too, so that's.
And that's the other issue, they're not campaigning for me, they're campaigning against somebody else.
Yeah. And then people think you've done it, but it's actually this other place, yeah, that's definitely. Complicated.
I'd like to go back to the anonymous donation thing. Why would we allow that at all? I mean, pretty soon you got fifty, fifty dollar contributions that are anonymous. And suddenly somebody has provided a candidate with a donation that exceeds an individual's. You know, the fifteen hundred dollar limit. I I just.
It's fifty dollars, the state has a limit of fifty dollars.
I get that.
Per person, but per, by the individual, so if I came up and gave you. Twenty five dollars one time and thirty dollars another time.
Fifty times. And I report each of them individually.
That's per year.
No, it's per election, yeah.
That's per motorcycle.
Today, tomorrow, the next day, I get fifty bucks.
That's what you're saying, then.
You're, you're, you have to report.
You have to.
It's not per instance, it's per.
Per election cycle.
But how would you know what you're saying?
Oh, okay, so.
He's talking about.
If you bought an envelope of money in the mail, I guess, and didn't know where it was from.
Well, if you got, if if you got any kind of a contribution and you don't list it, because you didn't want to, you could, you could do that, but it's relying a little bit on your integrity.
It's one of the discouraging things, I think, is that as the elections official, I'm supposed to check all the donations and contributions, but I don't see bank accounts, I don't see. You know, so unless somebody were to call and say, listen, I gave Red Flintstone's five hundred dollars and he did not put it on his report, I would not even. I wouldn't even know.
Right.
To look for that, I mean, how would I know, you know?
Yeah.
Well, and then that's part of the mystery in all of this is, you know, if if. An instance were observed where an individual made a contribution. Three contributions to a candidate and exceeded the fifteen hundred dollars, and I call you Tracy and you say, oh, I'll get a hold of that candidate. And the candidate, you get back to me and say, the candidate promised him, that was a mistake. He just wrote it down a third time and it was a mistake, there's no opportunity for reconciliation of that.
They would need to amend their financial report.
I know, yeah, they do, but it never gets looked at alongside a bank statement.
Oh, yeah, you know, we don't, there's a requirement.
Cross-reference, there's all kinds of opportunity for.
That's the way it is.
Sneaky business, you know, and that's off.
We did have an incident sometime where a company or had extra funds, so they sent it out to the candidates. Without telling the candidates they were going to do that, candidates received checks and that they couldn't accept them, because it would have put them over the limit, so they're, they couldn't, what do we do, do we return the check, do we deposit it and then write it back out, what do we do, you know?
So was, and I'm gonna. Flap in the breeze here a little bit, I'm sorry, the. You mentioned financial reporting deadlines. Was the last go around an anomaly because of the state delaying the primary and the general because of the congressional seat? And if not, are we aligning our reporting dates so that a constituent can engage in that financial reporting before casting a ballot?
There's been lots of discussion about that, last year's reports were were moved with the date changes. But they're based on, they're due seven days before the general primary election, seven days before the general election, fourteen days after, so it's. There are a certain amount of days before or after the election date. States right now, they do not have it, it's seven days before the primary, I believe. So while. Constituents receive the ballot twenty one days ahead of time, if they want to see the financial report. Before casting their vote, they would need to wait until that seven days before the election to see that report.
And in the last cycle, the fattest part of our campaign collection took place and and and. Wasn't reported until after the primary. And there were those of us that said to our constituents, we're gonna post early because we believe that you deserve the opportunity to see who's contributing to these campaigns. Prior to voting, so we weren't, we, all of that collection wasn't reported until after the primary vote had been cast.
The primary, yeah.
So are we, are we talking about aligning this so that. It's at least before the primary?
State is not, they are not planning on any changes when I asked them last year, because I asked, because I had received questions from candidates. I asked them and they, at that time, were not planning any changes to the reporting. Now, it could have changed since, you know.
Can we?
Oh, boy, yeah, we can.
Okay.
This is what I'm trying to stop, though.
Well, I understand you're trying to tie things.
But I do understand, I really, I do, because I've always felt the same way, it's like, well, if ballots go out twenty one days ahead of time, why aren't reports due? To coincide with that, why isn't that updated with the? Vote by mail process.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I could get more information on what the dates currently are. If you would like, and then you could look at them and make some suggestions or.
I think that'd be a good, thank you.
Just because I don't have, I I should have brought those, but.
Anything we do will be in addition to state, because we have to do.
We have to, we have to do that, so you can add additional reports, you can't take them away.
Okay.
Right, but I think last year was an anomaly, and I don't know that we need to make our standard. Set up for an anomaly year, that was just an unusual set of circumstances, that doesn't happen very often.
It's, no, that doesn't, but it's still the same. You know, it was fourteen days after the primary, seven days before the primary were the dates. That did, that's the same as it always is for every election, it's just those primaries and the general changed, so that's what moved it.
Say that again, fourteen after the primary, seven before the general, right?
Well, it's seven, seven before the primary and the general and fourteen. For the final afterwards, thirty days after, it's, each one is different, let's just put it that way, so I can get you that information, because each one is different.
Let's review that if we can, yeah, if we can maybe get that out.
And Ogden's report says twenty days on one of them where the state says within thirty, so trying to meet. So we we would have everybody turn them in on the twentieth day, which is different than everybody else, which would. Kind of panic, other cities going, wait, why are you getting a report today, and I'm like, because of our rules, so that was the idea in resetting it or taking a look at it, but I can get those dates for you specifically, and then you can look at them.
Can I, can I throw a wrench in the gears a little bit? I I think it needs to be considered that that we as American citizens are entitled to a private ballot, a secret ballot. And so if. If you want to keep your ballot secret and you want to contribute to a candidate. You've just blown your secret ballot unless you do it at fifty bucks or less, you know, that that's the thing, I I always had some concern about with respects to, we gotta list everybody that that contributes. Is because some people don't want to be. Outed for what their support will be. You know, does that make sense? And so to have this this ability to pay, to to contribute at fifty bucks or less, at least maintains the secret ballot. It's unlikely that somebody's gonna contribute to you and vote for the the opponent, you know what I mean, it's, it's, that's not likely to happen. So I I think that, you know, we need to kind of keep those things connected a little bit. So I'm kind of grateful for that change a little, you know, I I think the reality of it is, is maybe it'll get more contributions. If they can. Contribute and not be listed on a forum somewhere.
And yet, as a voter. To know who is supporting a candidate is instructive as well, I mean, and that's exactly what you're saying, it's instructive. And it makes more clear, I think, what someone might be campaigning on, you might say one thing, but. You're receiving contributions from an organization that opposes what you just said, and that doesn't make sense.
But at fifty bucks or less, you're probably, they're not, they're not moving the needle a long way.
Fifty or less, okay, you were talking less, okay.
Yeah, they're not moving the needle a long way, you know, they're not. They're not George Soros, you know.
Right.
Gonna be super secretive, you can just wait till after, you know, at the end of the election.
I I suspect if if people really wanted to do a lot more, they just, they just wouldn't talk to you and they'd just campaign for you.
No, there's other things you can do.
Yeah.
I agree with Angela, by the way. We we find that a lot of people wait till the last disclosure and then give money.
People work the system, I also, I just, and I know we're still on this other topic, but I do want to talk about the increase in the amounts too.
Yes, that was next on my list, so go go ahead, Angela, thank you.
Well, and I feel like, because I'm in a race right now where there's no limit at all, which just seems wild to me, um. I actually, I'm kind of for keeping the limits lower at the city level, because honestly, I feel like we're not as big of elections, number one. If one person can give you ten thousand dollars, I mean, that's sometimes a whole campaign for city council, I mean, in my experience, you know, in my little race that I've done.
And ten for mayor and and three thousand.
For mayor, yeah, or that, so, I think it's fifteen hundred and three thousand, sorry, now I'm on a different page.
That's what it had.
One of those originally instigated, though, they were.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand and nine.
That's when they were upped.
That's when they were established.
That's when they were established.
But we had, we had mayoral candidates who brought in over two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
This is the. Largest election campaign finance I've ever seen since I've been here.
And that's, and that's another reason I would. Kind of rather keep it smaller, because I mean, yeah, the amounts of money, I'm just against having to raise so much money to get elected, number one.
For a local municipal.
And then this legisla, I mean, there's no limit on anything, people can give you or money or other thing, you know, it's like, yeah, the amounts of money are just intense. So like, under fifty dollars, like it meant something in my little campaign as a council member. Whereas on this big scale, like, would fifty dollars really make that big of a difference, I don't know, you know, you're thinking about two hundred thousand dollars.
Don't know.
So on that, I was just curious how we arrived at doubling. Those numbers when I I had a constituent reach out to me and say. According to their calculation, inflation since two thousand nine. Based on the CPI was forty seven percent, I went to ChatGPT and it provided me with the formula for for calculation. And came up with forty two percent. And either way, it whole, adjusted for inflation, city council going from fifteen hundred bucks um in two thousand nine till today, adding that forty two percent, it's twenty two oh five, and for the mayor, rather than ten grand, it's seventy three fifty. Um, I I too, I just, I just worry that this becomes about one's ability to raise money in a local campaign rather than getting out and meeting the people uh where they stand. And you know, it's all done from a mailhouse or a robocall or a texting service or and and signs. I I I just, I'm concerned about the amount of money that goes into it.
And people can definitely get around to it. I mean, I know in several um campaigns, you would see like all the family members donating five thousand dollars each, you know, seeing, still get around it and
Yeah.
give people a lot of money. You just don't have to, the same amount from, you know, one person.
And maybe it's refreshed after the primary. So you're you're limited during the primary. I can give to Angela a limit of fifteen hundred dollars, and if she gets through the primary, we erase it and start again. I can give her another fifteen hundred bucks. As a thought.
I I was never able to raise any money before the primary. Nobody wants to give any money to one of eight people or something, you know? They wanna see how it's gonna shake out.
Rich, I don't think you've ever had an opponent.
Oh, that's not, there there were actually eight people the first time I ran.
Talk about anomaly. It's hard to raise money for a primary when you don't have one.
Did you feel like the candidates were asking for more, for people to be able to donate more?
No, we just.
Yeah, a number was put in there.
Yeah, we thought you would have an opinion on it, so really, it's up to you. We just were.
So no one's asking.
Yes, we picked a number.
So we're fine with leaving it where it was.
I hate the whole thing that it has to be that many.
Or do you wanna, to your point, twenty five hundred and seventy five hundred, I mean, or.
I actually think it would be fun to lower the mayors to the council members.
Well, there's another thought is that, you know, running a campaign as a at-large candidate is probably a little different than a district candidate, and so there's.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah.
It it it, when you have to go across the city, it's a lot, it's a lot harder than when you uh only have three thousand voters versus eighteen thousand, so.
That's true. So and then, Tracy, is there, as Angela mentioned, a lot of monies are donated just before the election. So that, or after, and that's getting to my point. Are there any reporting requirements after an individual is elected to provide ongoing transparency with regard to what's going on financially for their campaigns?
As the um statute stands right now, or Ogden, if a candidate receives a contribution of seven hundred and fifty dollars or more, seven days before the election, they have to fill out a report um within twenty four hours and disclose that.
Right.
There is nothing afterwards similar to that. There's nothing for after they're elected other than when they give their final report at thirty days. It would have that. Um, or if they ran again, then any money received after that, when they run again, they'd have to show the difference.
Yeah, and I'm kind of.
But no, there isn't at this time.
Getting to influence once somebody's in the office under the guise of supporting a campaign that's yet to come.
At the legislative level, there is, you have an end of year report, end of year report on your account.
Every year.
Um, I think so. I know this, yeah, I don't, I think so. If you have that account open, I think you have to do it end of year. Because um sometimes legislators are using that account for other expenses during the year too. Constituent services and other things, whereas we may not really do that as much as a council.
Okay, educate me about this. Why would somebody contribute after the campaign, after it's all over? Is it just a, they're just helping, are they just promising you that they're going to do it? So you, so you spend it up and then you just loan yourself some money?
Some candidates will loan themselves two million dollars.
Right.
And then when they get the donations at the end, they can pay themselves back.
So that's, that's, that's the whole point there. Okay.
It's not me, but, you know, some.
I'm kind of naive. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be.
I had no idea you were right, Rich, until I got myself into this.
Okay.
Whoever's got two million dollars to loan themselves, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very interesting.
All right. A number.
Do we wanna come up with a number right now or do we wanna think about it and we can before, this comes to us on the fifteenth for action, so next.
Well, with these changes, I think we'll have to postpone.
We might need to postpone.
I think we'll have to postpone it till um November twelfth.
For your question, Mr. Chair, I would like to propose that we just increase the donation amounts by fifty percent of what the, what the current level is at. So that wouldn't be quite what uh is proposed, but that's what I would like to just start as a starting point.
So seventy five hundred a mayor and then you're looking at.
Forty five.
Twenty two fifty?
Oh, yeah, yeah, twenty two fifty, yeah, if it's math wrong.
So I would like to look at the numbers, I think, in an at-large might wanna be a diff, uh, council member might wanna be a different amount than. But I don't know if that's maybe twenty two fifty is enough. I don't know.
I tend to agree. I think that at-large might, it might benefit from having a slightly higher level that they can just, yeah.
Well, though, they're, they're probably being contributed to by a larger demographic too, though, so I mean, the the number per per contributor, I can't think that's gonna matter that much. I think that, you know, cause they they're, they're gonna have ninety thousand people, potential contributors where a district person's only gonna have a fourth of that.
They they could still have the same contributors. You don't have to live in the district to contribute to the campaign.
My district does.
Right, you might have the larger exposure.
That's, that's true.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, I, my my point is, is that uh I don't, I don't think you need a four times
Yeah.
for the, for a, an at-large over a district. Complicates things a little bit, but
it's a point well taken because it is a little more expensive campaign.
There's thirty six thousand registered voters in Ogden.
Yeah, I just used the ninety from our population, so.
Yeah, sure.
I thought it should be a lot closer, but.
Well, those children probably gonna have a hard time that.
Not the people under eighteen. I'm not, I'm not advocating for voter fraud. Yeah, I think there's some more stuff to think about for sure.
Okay, so we will um bring this back for an additional discussion um in November and you know, so that you can have some more discussion, make, make some changes and some proposals based on this discussion and bring it back.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I I do have one last comment that I'd like to make, and that is uh my first foray into politics was last year running for office, and I just wanna commend you, Tracy, for how you handled things in your office. You were kind, you were, you shared information better than anybody else I spoke with, and you were courteous in the way and you were encouraging. And uh, you know, for a first timer, that's kind of nice to have that warm reception when you go into file and things like that, and you you guided me through that process, which I, you know, I imagine you do it for anybody and everybody, but it was nice from my perspective to have that help because it's the first time for me and you were just really outstanding in the way you have things, and I just commuted it for everybody, so thank you.
We try to. Um, I think it takes a lot to run for office and I always admire people who put themselves out there, cause I would be too chicken. So.
Vice Chair White, did you have a comment?
No, yeah, I just, I I just, I really like the the direction. I think it's, you know, Dave, thanks for checking Chat G P T out. Um, but I I do like, I like the direction. I think um you know, I I think at our level, we, at in the end, I I think if we can get a lot more fifty dollar uh donations than one big hundred dollar donation or hundred, a thousand dollar donation, we're we're better off because we know that those are voters. So I I mean, I like the direction we're going. It's just I can see it all, all the ways. Just thank you for doing this, Tracy.
And I was just gonna say ditto what Sean said. Thank you very much, Tracy. Your whole department did an outstanding job of communicating with me and my candidacy and made it very easy and warm and friendly. It's a, it's a intimidating thing to walk up to that counter uh and and hope you're doing things right. You were very supportive. Thanks.
But your reminders, in addition to what Councilman Graff said, your reminders about the national reporting and things like that, that was awesome because it's not on my, was not on my radar at all. So thank you for.
The deadlines come up, we send our emails out and hope that you guys all remember and cross our fingers and so we don't wanna throw anyone off the ballot. So, thank you. I'll provide um the reporting dates to Janie and she can distribute that out to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, yeah, it looks, you got what we needed. All right, let's go with uh the proposed on text amendments, Barton Bryer. Oh, there he comes. Our planning director. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, we presented on this code amendment last time and you continued for discussion, so I don't have a presentation just to remind you that the code amendment would prohibit new multifamily dwellings in the C two, C three zones. It would still allow uh multifamily dwellings in our downtown or mixed use, our multifamily zones.
All right, so do we have any further discussion? I know we had a lot of discussion last time. So I don't know if we wanna go through any specific points that that we talked about or said, Councilmember Myers, wanna start, lead us off? Go ahead and hit your mic. There we go. Or no? There it is.
Thanks. Just speaking to one constituent, Ivan Carroll, he showed up at the Planning Commission and made some remarks there. And so I contacted him and asked him what uh the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting were kind of brief. And so I called him up and asked him specifically what his concerns were. And he said this limits some type of um housing, for instance, a mother-in-law apartment, or if you wanted to do a duplex, does that fall into this multi-housing? Whether it's eligible or not eligible in these zones, would would it, would they be prohibited? So I just wanna get your clarification on that because that's a big issue with, you know, a friend, a constituent, that I I wanna be able to answer his questions.
Yeah, so in the, in those zones, it would prohibit, you know, kinds of uh residential development, so yes, it would include those.
A mother-in-law apartment is included in that as well? Is there any way to have an exclusion to that if you decided you wanted to to have that kind of a living accommodation?
So you're talking about something that might be a non-conforming use? Is that, is that what you're?
Yes.
So an existing property, non-conforming.
Well, I I I'm gonna back up from that and say, let's just say that uh I wanted to add living accommodations for my mother-in-law behind my home, and so I went ahead and and that would, that would prohibit me from doing that in those areas. Is, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, yes, it would. If you were in a commercial zone, if we're in, if you had the house and you were in a commercial zone, then it would.
Okay.
Prohibit that, yes.
And and the reasoning behind that, what would that be? I, just please help me because I'm trying to be educated on this, so.
Well, we just drafted the rule as a, as a general standard, so without uh doing any exceptions for any s, those specific situations. And and looking at the, this, the general principle that those areas were not really great areas for housing.
Okay.
I think, I think you also mentioned that there were areas that potentially would probably be likely, you know, would be a likely spot for a rezone, like just looking at this, there's maybe a couple of those homes just off the corridor, and maybe this home might fit into an example like that. So it's, the the zone change would not allow it, but that wouldn't stop somebody from petitioning a rezone potentially to
Correct.
to do what they're looking to do. If it, yeah, and I don't know if we have that map that I, or from the presentation last week or not, but that's.
Yeah, and we have had two applications for zone changes uh since we proposed this, that are are kind of on that edge and it's, you know, they're a block wide off the main.
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit more about how much that costs and how much time it takes for people to go through that process, just to, you know, add on for information.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's about twenty seven hundred dollar application and it takes three, four months.
A homeowner would have to pay twenty seven hundred dollars.
So would that be restrictive? What were the possibilities if he wanted to put in a duplex on his property, where he's got, where he has an existing structure perhaps already and he wants to add a rental apartment next to it? Is that, what what is the possibility if he goes through that zoning change that would be approved?
Are you talking about a, like a, a mother-in-law apartment or an E D U or something like that?
Because I think housing is a huge issue, and so I don't, I'm wondering if if we really need to be that restrictive in some of those areas. I see with the multi, multi apartment type things, why we wanna do that, understand that. But I'm wondering if it's too much of a limitation on individual, you know, homeowner that wants to establish a you know, or or have a duplex or a mother-in-law apartment, something like that. I'm wondering if that's something that you've talked about or explored or if it's even needed. So I I'm not taking one side or the other. I just bring up that possibility because I think representing a constituent, I just, I just wanna know how to respond to him.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, to be clear, we're talking about uh places where there's an existing home within a commercial zone that if you wanted to add to that um existing home, yeah, the proposal would not allow you to, to add that home to that site. Um and just with the fact that it's, it's a commercial zone, it's not a residential zone, so in essence, you've got a non-conforming use. If it's a single-family home, it'd be a non-conforming use and it wouldn't allow that expansion of a non-conforming use. You know, most of the cases that you're talking about would be in a residential zone. We do lots of, lots and lots of accessory dwelling units in residential zones.
Barton, if somebody had a home in a commercial zone right now, they wouldn't be able to do those things anyway before this change, is that correct? Could somebody build a duplex on their property if they already had a, if they had a house?
Yes, they could.
In a commercial zone?
That's definitely one of my concerns is that we're trying to get more housing options. And then because we're doing kind of this blanket approach that have all these areas that you're seeing are potential exceptions. But then we're actually putting that cost back on the property owner to come to us. I don't know, that just seems like a conflict to me. Maybe I'm thinking about it incorrectly. They, you know, they already have those properties. Then we're gonna actually put this restriction on them, you know, in that particular case, they'd have to, and they aren't sure it's gonna actually get approved. Cause depending on how we or the Planning Commission perceive it, they might pay that twenty seven hundred dollars and actually not get it approved.
Right.
And they might have to have a design. You know, they might have to have designs made. So we have developers, that's the case, and that's a little bit different to me than a resident.
Just. I think the other part of that discussion was that the, you know, we're in the middle of this zone, rezone for the, or the.
General plan.
General, thank you, yeah.
Smart.
And so that might catch some of those spaces as well, possibly. I don't know. That.
Well, I would hope that it would. I mean, especially where you've already identified them as potential changes. I mean, certain of that will be discussed, I think.
But why don't we make this change now when we're in the middle of that? I guess I'm just getting confused about the timing.
Cause we got six months and it's a big discussion.
November, yeah.
Yeah.
On on kind of the same line, Barton, you'll refresh my memory on this. We walked up as a planning commission, we walked up Washington Street, and because of the concern for housing, there was a discussion about converting some homes that had been once residences and then turned into commercial properties, being allowed to go back to residential properties. And many of those, I think, are in the commercial zone along Washington Boulevard.
Yes.
Sure.
Would they be allowed to convert to a single-family residence if they're currently commercial?
Yes.
Under the the ordinance that was passed a few years ago or, am I recalling correctly?
Yeah, you're, you nailed it just right. Yes, there are some single-family homes in commercial zones. It was billed as a single-family home. Some of those property owners have then changed it to an office of a beauty salon, something else. And we did change the zoning ordinance two or three years ago to say, okay, if you Change the zoning ordinance two or three years ago to say, okay, if you want to go back to a single-family home, it was originally built a single-family home. You can do that even though you're not zoned for that. This amendment doesn't change that allowance. So they could still do that in that.
Okay, thank you. And if they chose to do that, could they also add an ADU in the back?
No, they could not. Yeah, an accessory dwelling units would not be a permitted use.
Because they'd still be in a, a C two zone. Yes, okay.
I have an add-on question. It might be a little of a tangent, but um. So if they were in that particular situation, we may have required them to do certain things with the property, like add parking or other kinds of things. Or put in a parking lot. And so now would they then be required to make that all grass again or something? If they go back to a resident? And I know it's not probably our disordinance. I'm just curious how that would work.
Yes, there was some allowance. I don't recall it, but yeah, there were areas where they had a big. Where they changed their front yard to a big parking lot. There was some requirement to return some of that to grass. Change it back. More landscaping, not necessarily grass.
I've got a couple of other questions too, but I did want to ask about one of the properties that you put on the list. And I, again, I don't know the history of all of them. And this is one of our challenges, the council members that I always find kind of. Frustrating is that I, you know, obviously I've taken on this job and I try to do my best and my responsibility to understand everything, but. Got a day job, you know, we have other things going on. So I can't keep up with all of these projects. So the one that has been outreach to me about. Is the, I think it's the Days End Conversion at thirty-three oh six Washington. I'm not sure if we all got those similar letters. Around that they've been working on this with the city for a couple of years now. I mean, and I understand that maybe they have a different perception of. What the city's approach was to that, you know, and administrations changed, so I totally get that. But what happens to a project like that? Because you're saying here that it, it is impacted by this change and that. You know, that the application didn't comply with zoning, it wasn't approved. So where does that kind of project end up when we pass this ordinance?
They would not be able to convert that to residential units. They could use it for other uses. They could use it for motel offices. Demo the site and construct a commercial building or anything that's allowed in the. Commercial zone could be used.
So then you, I mean, you're basically saying the city didn't agree with all the stuff that they're saying that the city did agree to go along with and creating the property.
Well, I, I don't know all of their claims. I can, I just know that the filed building permitted didn't meet zoning. And was not approved.
There was something in the packet that I read this time around that I didn't catch the last time around. And it has to do with group dwellings. And it's my understanding that a group dwelling are several individual. Residences on a single lot.
Yes, more than one. Building, yes.
Okay, more than one residential building on a single, on one lot. Okay. And in the reading. It was also required in a group dwelling that seventy-five percent of all buildings. Needed to have commercial space. Or retail space in them. Did I read that right?
You're, you're on the right track. So we did talk about mixed-use projects.
Right, on ten acres or more?
On ten acres or more. So if you have a site that. It's ten acres or more, you do seventy-five percent of the ground floor area as commercial, then you could use the other twenty-five percent. Of the ground floor area as residential. And so that requirement would apply whether it's. Just one building, which would be an apartment or multiple buildings, which would be a group dwelling. So that the requirement would be the same for twenty-five.
Okay.
Maximum twenty-five percent ground floor residential area, seventy-five percent commercial or. Office area, ground floor.
Can you help me a little bit just again with all of the shifting sands around? I, I picture this as retail. Am I picturing this wrong? Because retail storefront stuff is struggling. I, I just can't square this requirement with the vacant space that we have in this city. On street level with plate glass. You know. That were once. Retail stores. I, I don't know why we're requiring more. The junction's been standing for how many years? And there's tons of empty space in that place. I don't quite get why we're requiring that.
So yeah, retail has changed and it wouldn't necessarily just be retail, it could be retail office or what I call commercial service. You know, uses. And there's no doubt about it, those have gone under quite a bit of change with. You know, with Uber Eats and with, you know, Amazon, you know, those have transformed. So I've looked carefully at what sort of the regional, the state projections, regional projections. And I'm cautiously optimistic about the, the need for more commercial space over time. There are existing spaces that just are, are not prime spaces and just will never be prime spaces. You know, it's an old building. It doesn't have parking. It doesn't have good visibility and those spaces are just. Always going to struggle. But looking forward in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, I do believe that we'll have more. Commercial centers with office retail and commercial service and that we will have needs for those. Going into the future, we will see new. New stuff being built.
Okay. And then my last. Fuzzy, I can't get my head around it is if. The Fred Meyer's site, for example, is not good for. A multifamily apartment or condominium complex, how is it good for senior living?
Yeah, that's a judgment that you can make. I think the, in the proposal, we looked at. The likelihood that the seniors that would. That would live there would probably be seniors that. Are less mobile, that aren't, you know, walking to the parks, aren't getting on their bikes, going to places. And so. Certainly lots of seniors do all that stuff, but if you were to live in there, that. You'd probably be more self-contained in that sort of environment.
So a segment of that. Senior market.
Yes.
The ones that aren't walking.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes they call them, you know, those active seniors. I guess the less active seniors.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a.
Turn your microphone on, Rich.
Oh, I thought it was, sorry. Sorry, Marcia. Yeah, they. They really can't live at the home anymore. And so these assisted livings are already. Being their life. I mean, they have recreation facilities. They have everything. It's all contained. And that, that's kind of what I'm picturing. And maybe I'm wrong, but that's kind of what I would have pictured as, as what's. Approval in those areas.
I couldn't want to add on to you, so I'm adding on to everything you're saying. One thing that I would appreciate if possible before we vote on this is to understand what all the vacant properties are. I don't know if we have an inventory. Like that available. Because that would help me to understand. I mean, I do also see just, I mean, I see some areas that seem to be rebounding a little bit. With retail or with other kinds of uses and then other areas that aren't. And. Like the example I'm thinking of is on Washington Boulevard, there's several things now popping up, you know, down where we are, have built more housing. And so when my thinking, you know, like I kind of said last week, it's kind of a chicken and egg situation. We say we don't want to continue to depend on cars. But then we're sort of creating a situation where people have to take a car to certain places. And then, I don't know, I just, in my mind, I just have this oxymoron happening where. We're saying that the infrastructure isn't there to support people with like buses, but buses except for the OGX really, right? They can change their stops. Based on the activity that's happening in the area, just like we're thinking about changing the trolley route or whatever. I mean, these are reasons why we didn't put in a. An actual rail or a trolley, you know, is because things change like that. So it, it does concern me that we're taking people and having them live farther away from maybe commercial centers. And actually what I thought we were trying to do is get people living closer to some of those areas too. So. Again, it just kind of, it feels like an oxymoron to me. But maybe I'm, you know, I just have a different perspective.
Any other discussion on this item or questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure the reason why we brought that map up again. Anything that we need to point out or illustrate on that map that. Was pertinent to our discussion?
I just, I think some of the discussion you were having was. Related to, there's some of these fringe areas that there's own commercial, but they're really. Probably not zoned appropriately. Commercial, they're really more residential. They're part of a, more part of a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that you see there are some spots where it's. The commercials right next to residential. And, yeah.
I think it would be helpful on that. You know, I don't know how much work this is, but when we're talking about the vacant land that we have available, it'd be helpful for me to know what they're also zoned. Um, because then, you know, we're suggesting that maybe in the orange zone, that that would be a place for building, but I don't know off the top of my head if there's already things there. Are we talking about, you know, tearing down single-family homes to build mid-rising? Are those vacant pieces of land right now? I guess I just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Ogden is largely built out. So like that orange area, you're going to find, you know, a lot here. Maybe a couple of lots here that are vacant and, you know, maybe an old house that somebody might tear down.
So what would be an example of mid-rise residential?
I think a mid-rise residential is something that's like three to six stories tall. Uh, let's see, the Morelli Apartments on Ninth Street is a good example of something like. The, the Riverwalk Phase Two, the next Fred Meyers, the, all those about four stories that I call that mid-rise residential.
So if there's only parts of those zones and the, so those areas right now, they aren't just one big piece of land that's open and vacant. There's just spot, spots in there.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's an area that's zoned for that, but yeah.
Again, I guess I just, I'm having a hard time making this blanket change when I just have a lot of information that's missing for me.
Yeah, welcome, Mara.
I know that wasn't a question that you had, so, but I did want to point in the transmittal in case it was in. Elaborating just on the discussion about areas that, that would be allowed to have. Housing. So for example, those around an approved stationary plan around the OGX. So when you talked about transportation and wanting to encourage housing in those, that's, that's, that would be allowed. And then also just the comment in the transmittal that we do have. A number of almost eight hundred townhome and low-rise apartments either under construction, approved or in review. Like that with, that kind of in the hopper. And the statement that we do have sufficient. Land in downtown mixed-use multifamily zones to accommodate forecasted needs for mid-rise apartments through twenty fifty. So those are just some important facts that are in the transmittal. So I thought I would point that out. And then just to update on, on the comment about the senior. Housing, it's also listed that those types of projects are, like, do have that self-contained. Like recreation amenities, kind of to your comment, but that, that was noted as well. So I just. Now, now I'm just missing where that was, but I, that's kind of, kind of that definition.
Nice, that's a full question. So you're saying on the red right now, and I apologize if this, I'm like dense about this. I, I, I'm just not getting it, but. And the red areas on this map right now, that there are areas where we have transportation that would, transportation hubs that would allow for. Other kinds of development.
Yeah, with the transportation mess.
So maybe that would be helpful for me, maybe if that was pointed out on the map, that would be very helpful. If, if you don't mind. And I apologize again, like I just try to catch up when I'm reading that stuff and so.
Yeah, those, those do have the transportation corridors in them.
So is that where those circles are?
No, the circles are places.
Thirty percent of land.
Yeah, you're limited.
That would be super helpful if we could before, I, I don't know how much it is before next week to see where those transportation hubs are.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
Otherwise I have to make up the map myself.
Jared, I, I, I think. My, I, I, I've got a concern that, that our discussion is really not talking about the things that we're really here to talk about. Which is. Housing in commercial zones, you know, I, I don't know that we need to discuss. So much that. Everything that is commercial should be. I don't think that's what we're saying. I think we're saying that. That, that our commercial zones ought to be for commercial uses. And. I, I think the enemy of the, of the good would be the perfect. And in this case, so if we get ourselves all worked up about. Every little spot that maybe should be something else. And so we can't approve. This, so in other words, we, we, we continue to allow. High-density housing anywhere in the C two and C one zone, CP two, CP one zones. I think that's, that would be, that would be an error. I, I think we need to, we need to. If there's some things needing tweaking afterwards, I think we do it because we've got till November, what I just read. Yeah, so I, 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 I worry that we're getting ourselves wrapped up around the axle over stuff that. Maybe is, is just future steps.
Yeah, but I, I guess to, to just push back a little bit, those steps cost our constituents money. To then remedy later.
Well.
And developers too. I mean, I'm not saying developers, you know, that's just part of their business model, but we're trying to get more housing. We're trying to do all these things, but then we're kind of causing this.
Well, well, there, there is a lot of places housing can be. I mean, we're not, we're not wiping out everywhere that housing can be in the city. That's, that's kind of what I'm saying. When most of our city can still be housing. It's just the C one, C two, CP one, CP two zones that we're saying that's not appropriate there.
Rich, I appreciate you saying that. I think that's an important point that we're just trying to preserve those corridors for commercial use. And not have those high-rise apartments or rental apartments be in those commercial areas. So. That's, that's the whole issue.
That is the issue in my mind. I, I think we can discuss a lot of things that aren't perfect about it. But it's a lot better than what we currently have. Yes.
Vice Chair, what, you've got your hand up. I don't, I would make sure you've got a chance to say something if you have something there.
Yeah, I, I guess a couple of things. I. Barton, first, a comment you made. And, and just follow up and I, if I was there, I would have flippantly said something, but. You said something about it's, I think you use the word, it's, it's. An opinion or something. It's one opinion about senior living. You, you came back at Dave a little bit about the opinion and I, I think. Senior living in. One of the busiest streets. Two of the busiest streets in Ogden is probably not the best place for that. But what I was going to ask. Is, are there benchmarks? Are there benchmarks of a healthy city? Between what, what is considered residential and what is considered commercial? Are there any benchmarks that, that you can think of or are there other cities that? And I mean, healthy cities that can live off of, you know, economic development, commercial zones. So that's one, that's one question I have. The other question is, is as we, and I, I am a proponent of density. I think that we should have density. So. I think there's a way to do density, which is. Increasing height and, and allowing developers to go up higher. Have we. Explored that in areas where they can actually maybe do more height than what we allow in our zone? So there's a couple of questions there.
Yeah, great questions. Appreciate it. Benchmarks. You know, generally you should look out in the future and see what are your future needs for residential and look out in the future and see what are your. And look out in the future and see what are your future needs for commercial and industrial and parks and every other thing? And, and meet those needs uh, that you see. Yeah, communities that are very heavily residential. Suffer, and those that are very heavily, you know, industrial, commercial, very low residential suffer. So there, there is a real advantage to having a good balanced mix of both. And, and again, I'd say, look at your, what are your future needs for, for all of those? And that's something we've been doing with the general plan. Um, in preparing this, we look specifically at what are our future needs for. Single-family sort of townhome and apartments. And um, you know, that's what we reported that. We believe that we have enough land to meet our future needs for apartments. Even after this change, uh, that we have enough land to accommodate needs for townhomes. We don't have for single family, and we're gonna have to be creative to meet that for single family. Again, we've looked at the, the commercial and um. You know, based on what's happened over the last five years, there's been a, a, a shrinking of that. But a lot of the uh, those spaces are starting to get filled up. And uh, we do look at, in the future, we will need more commercial land. And, and I don't have that quantified, we're looking at that through the general plan, but I do. I'm cautiously, cautiously optimistic that we will have need for the commercial land that we show in our, our plan maps.
What about the height restriction?
Yeah, great question, you know, we did. A lot of our housing is in downtown, which I was a very generous height restrictions. And the mixed use, we just uh, had changed some of the height limits to allow higher buildings in there. Um, in the, what we call the. The kind of fringes to downtown, we increased the height limits. We haven't looked at the other zones, the, what would be yellow on the map that you see there? Of about uh, whether those should have increased heights, increased densities. But that's something we, we can take a look at with the general plan and the code update.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This doesn't have much to do with this discussion. Point of curiosity, taking advantage of Barton being here. So with the Chamber of Commerce, we were at the Falcon, I think it's called Falcon Hill Development at in Clearfield. And there are some subcontractors that were there. Who are subcontractors to Northrop Grumman. And they were looking for commercial properties that they could come in and rent. As subcontractors to Northrop Grumman. And they wanted to be in the vicinity of Falcon Hill, they looked in Ogden, they looked in Riverdale, they looked in Roy. Clearfield, they didn't find the commercial property that they're looking for, so they end up in Salt Lake City. And so my question is, those are different types of commercial properties, they're larger properties and. But nonetheless, that it's a commercial thing, so I, it, it, this is, are we aware of that type of um. Businesses that are looking for commercial properties? I just, again, doesn't have anything to do with what we're looking at, but there is a need. And I'm not sure that we're addressing that need, a- and it's not the city's fault, I mean, developers. Could potentially be looking at that. Is that on our radar at all? Anything that we've looked at?
Yeah, I don't, not quite sure what kind of commercial they were looking for. Uh, certainly the office with the partnership with the uh, the Air Force. And the defense industry, um, you know, we're optimistic about that. We have had, talked to people uh, about bringing sort of defense industry, office development. Sort of things, there's a lot of interest in locating those sorts of facilities in, in Ogden. And we have had discussions with that kind of development. Um, as far as, you know. Sort of retail, you know, I haven't heard a lot of uh, requests for, you know, a large retail.
That's not retail, it's just contractors to Northrop Grumman.
Yes, and I think we won't, we're trying hard to accommodate that, that's a big part of the downtown plan is. Uh, wanting to bring those sorts of businesses downtown, we have had those sorts of discussions. And I think there's quite a possibility on some of these other sides of that.
I was just gonna say, I think Wonder Block is ho- hopefully to address some of that.
Yeah, that security hub. Oh, okay.
Okay. This is also coming to us next week. Um, if we have more, I, I think we've got some good questions that we can hopefully get some answers on before we. We uh, make, take action on this, but if there's anything else that comes to mind, we want to get those to Burton as soon as we can.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. Mara, we've got, uh, you listed here for an administrative update, our CAO. Chatting with Jared for a second here, so. Welcome back.
Thank you, um. Appreciate the opportunity, I just have a couple of updates, but um, just, I'll just start with the late breaking news um, from Jared. He just apparently had a meeting with um, Boyer and saying that their, their, all their commercial. And retail is filled in the uh, junction except for one, one small spot. So they've had a lot of interest and have been moving forward with filling that, so that's, that's good news. And for the demand here, I think it's a good indicator.
Yeah, that's awesome. Those are, they're, they're moving in then, uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's good, um.
Can you, can you clarify, I don't know, Blair?
The property manager at the junction.
Yeah.
I appreciate this clarification after I brought up this.
Yeah, I have um, a few things to report. Uh, one I wanted to start with is. Um, just to let all the council members know that at the mayor's request, we have been moving forward with. A number of customer service type improvement. Ideas at this point, but that I, I wanted to welcome your input as we move forward. But um, there's, there's a, there's kind of three pieces that we're looking at right now. And one of them is um, what we call the second floor north side process. And we, I know I've heard from a number of you over the years, but we've, um, we've started to take a deep dive there, which um, really is. Having uh, one of our staff members who's good at project. Um, analysis and process analysis, just starting with um, a deep dive into all the different processes that go on in that area. And then um, we're, you know, grouping them and then looking, looking for. And so Jared Johnson and um, Justin, uh, Justin Anderson are really heavily involved in that, because those two. That area involves both of their departments, and so I'm working with them to, um, now that we've evaluated and.
We're gonna swipe you out here.
So a little bit better, but um, now that we've, um, we're starting to evaluate all the different areas. And then we're going to be looking at different solutions, which may come to you at budget time, depending, we're kind of grouping them into just. Process efficiencies that we can make, um, more as uh, kind of lower, lower, like. Lower hanging fruit that we can take on kind of in the short term. And then whether um, we might have some software innovations that we're looking at. And then um, potentially if there are any staffing changes, but those are kind of the three ways um, we're looking at those changes. But we welcome, if you, if there's anybody that you wanted to connect us with. We've, we've made some uh, individual interviews with people recently that have come to our attention, that have had. That wanted to talk to us about their experiences there, so we can learn from that. We're also gonna be doing a survey, we're putting together a survey. That we want to both create a baseline, and so that's important that we do that at, at this time. And then after we make some improvements, and then of course, we'll, we'll go back. But we're looking at developing a survey to um, ask people some questions after. They've gone through an experience on the second floor, and then we'll use that as a baseline, so.
Mara, can, can you just list a couple of the services or the, on the second floor that would, like, an example of what those are?
Yeah, and there's, it can be really complicated, so anywhere from just an individual wanting to put in a, well. You know, it's not, not always that simple, but if somebody comes and maybe wants to put in a carport. Well, that can be a little bit complicated, because not all of, like, a carport isn't always allowed in the zone. But, but we're, an idea of a customer service improvement in that area would be rather than um. Somebody walking away, not being able to do that, we're trying to give them some options at that same time. So you, like, that might not be permitted, but here's some things that you can do, or if you just move that over a foot. Or just, just trying to, um, that could be a customer service situation that we're looking at. But then, then some people come, let's say if you're um, opening, wanting to open a small business in a. Uh, in an older um, property in the business district, which we'd love to promote. There's a lot of uh, situations that a, a person, you know, or a small business might encounter. So we're trying, trying to encourage how to get on top of that. We do have a um, a review meeting on Wednesdays, like a project review meeting, which is, which is open. And we want to, especially if um, let's say a small business has been in communication with our, our BIC. Center, we want to make sure that they're, um, that they have that information, that there's a place where they can go early on and. Give their ideas and have a forum with um, all of the, you know, different individuals, whether they're from. Building services or a planning division or business licensing, engineering. And have a, have a spot where they can ask their questions, it's a concept review meeting. And just before they invest a lot, it's really meant to be a preliminary opportunity for review. But we find occasionally that um, a, like a budding uh, business prospect is not aware that that meeting exists. And so there's a few low-hanging fruit that we can make sure that we're connecting people. But there are a lot of different processes um, involved, so yeah, not only just making sure that the small business idea is permitted in the zone. A lot of people don't know that um, if a type of a business requires upgrades to the structure. That they may be bringing it up to code, and that requires working with a licensed contractor. We find that people are under the impression that they can do the work themselves, maybe they can, but that's not allowed under the code. So it's almost a, we want to work on some um, checklists and forms um, that, that will be available. So that kind of dovetails into the second project that we have going on, and that's adding um, a chat feature to our website. And those are only as good as the content of your website. So at the same time that we're looking at the process on the second floor, we want to have forms and answers available. So that it will be more user-friendly when somebody asks the question, well, how do I, like, I'm interested in opening a business in downtown Ogden. Like, how do I do that? And hopefully, the answer will be populated with some of those forms, some of those checklists. And so that, it takes time, but we're, we're trying to work on a variety of angles to get at it.
Are, are you talking about an artificial intelligence?
Actually, a product that is on the state contract um, list already. And it, it were, um, it would, it would be that kind of a chat feature. But it, it would be, the way those work is there, you can, you can kind of set the parameters, yeah. So but, but what, what we're looking at would be limited to the parameters that are in our website, and so.
Or municipal code, is that?
But so, not so much just open, like, you know, information, but mostly limited to the information that we're providing. So that, that has a ripple effect, that we're working with um, the divisions that are responsible for keeping those. Uh, webpages updated with the information that, that could be responsive to a chat question. So um, there's a lot that we're, we're pushing down right now, but the mayor's really, that's a um, customer service, constituent services. Transparency, all of those are values, and we're really um, driving that down in multiple ways. And we'll be bringing that back to you as we move forward. And then we're looking at a um, a more robust. Kind of a three-one-one customer service software product, which I don't have a lot of information right now, we haven't even done the RFP for that. But more um, with some internal, like inward-facing software. Capabilities that we don't currently have, um, so that we're more readily able to answer a question that somebody might ask. Like, where is my, you know, I called about this issue a few weeks ago, where, you know, where are you on it? And like, there could be a customer service person at the city that would be able to look up your case number and give you a response. So that's, that's an internal function of the software, and then there could be some external features as well, that make it more user-friendly, more transparent for citizens. So it's kind of a multi-page approach, but I just wanted to let you know that we are in that process. And if you um, already have some individuals in mind that may have approached you, we're um, we're, we're happy to, to talk to that person. And um, get um, more details on the experience that they may have had. So we can learn from that, we're hoping to get some just good constructive feedback as we move forward.
Love that. Um, one thing I know that I've heard from different constituents, and just because all these businesses are so different. And I can see how it could be so complex to like, set up something that'll just help answer a question, because everybody has different models. But one thing that's definitely um, been brought up to me, and this has been over the years, so it's not, you know, just a recent issue either. Is that sometimes if you're opening a business that you also have to interface with the county, like, health department, that gets really confusing about who you have to talk to first, or. You know, if it's like a small bit, you know, like a vendor of some sort, um, making food. Or if it's, you know, at a, even at an event, they sometimes can't figure all that out, and then other people that have actual establishments, it gets complicated.
Yeah, and I did want to say to credit to our staff, because we have very, we have excellent staff that really do care, they're very responsive. They really want to provide excellent customer service. And I think there's a, a big chunk of things that go really well, that we don't hear about, we were talking about that today, like ninety percent of individuals that come. They get either, whether it's right away, they get what they, they need, or they get through the process. And so I really want to recognize that too, we have, we have an incredible staff on the second floor, and they're, they're just really dedicated to their jobs. They're, they've got great information, um, they work well together, they work well with citizens. And so, almost like we're, we're trying to start with those perfect storm cases that kind of bubble up. And how can we help, how can we help those situations? Where just people get caught in a snarl, and I kind of call it the perfect storm, but that just happens. But really did want to recognize that in the vast majority of circumstances, that, that it's working out really well. So I didn't want to set that, you know, like, paint a broad picture of, like, things aren't working, because they really are. In the vast majority of cases, but we're trying to just do a better, do a better job. And where we can provide a little bit more information upfront, so that um, individuals can do some due diligence. And, and they can have a forum to have questions answered, and get through the process a little bit more smoothly, especially in those tough scenarios. It might be multiple agencies involved and, um, and but again, I really appreciate the dedicated staff that we have. On the second floor and all the different areas, they work, they work extremely hard to provide um, great service to the public. And, and the vast majority of situations that really is happening, so absolutely need to recognize that.
Just add on, I just got a huge compliment on the court system recently, talking to someone. That they um, just pointed out that they have all these different systems in place, and I haven't been there. Just because I haven't gotten caught speeding, but anyway, whatever it might be. Um, but they said that they went with a friend, and like, it was just so explicit, there was all these different ways that was communicated to the person about the steps you have to take. And like, what you're supposed to do, so.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. I do know that court services have gotten a lot, a lot more customer-friendly since um, things went virtual. For a while, and there are so many different options, whether it's in-person or online. There's um, kind of a conflict resolution type programs that are online. And we really make it a lot easier for people to get situations resolved in that area. But, but yeah, that's, that's just, that's great feedback, because we're also looking at some, you know, just trying to get some really good, like, citywide. Customer service training modules, our employees really want that, and even, even areas that are going really well. But we do have, you know, like that clerk staff, or utility billing staff, or second floor staff, the cashiers. And um, they're, they're really eager to even, even know, like, how can I even do better about this? How can I have better conversations with people? How can I, you know, solve problems more quickly? And so we're, um, there's a lot of eagerness. better conversations with people, how can I, you know, solve problems more quickly, and so we're, um, there's a lot of eagerness to, to keep doing a better job on behalf of the public. Um, yeah, so a couple other things, um, Twentieth Street is coming along, I don't, I apologize, I don't, I don't have an exact date um, on when that is, but I'm, I'm hearing that 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 project has gone smoothly, it's um, nearing completion, and then we're also moving forward with um, repaving at tw- on Twentieth Street near the Marshall White Center, so um, be on the lookout for that. Um, those are some good, good road projects that, that we've been involved with.
Could ask a question of?
Yeah.
So um, if you're driving south on Harrison, and you come to Twentieth Street, wanna turn on Valley Drive, you haven't been able to turn left there for a long time, and I can't figure out why. You know, there's, you can go through the, the supermarket and come through and, and go down that street, but there just doesn't seem to be any apparent reason why you can't turn left.
Hmm, yeah, yeah. And the good news is, that is, um, I understand that there is, either, we're starting to um, align funding for that, but there's um, there's definitely um, in the next phase of Twentieth Street, looking at that situation.
That's that WACOG project though, right?
East of, east of Harrison.
Redoing that intersection.
Yeah, re- redoing that on, on the east side, and trying to be able to um I think that, you know, that would be a goal when you're coming off Valley Drive to, to make a left there, and there's some, some changes that need to happen there, but also making it more pedestrian and bike friendly in that, and then all the way down the canyon road there, um, so, yep, so there's, that's in the works, and maybe I can bring that, like, back for another update.
I've just scratched my nut, I, I just can't figure why I can't turn left.
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of the C I P that was?
Yeah, it is part of the C I P, it, it is part of an upcoming C I P that, that should be kind of phase two of like, the Twentieth Street project, but I don't have all the information on the timing, or some of the steps that need to happen before we move forward with that, but I'll, I'll ask about that, because it, it is exciting, I think that's gonna make, that's gonna have a big impact on a lot of people, like, coming from either from those neighborhoods, or, you know, the, the, the bike access and pedestrian access, and be able to get to the um, you know, the, the river um, trail areas, and get, you know, get down to that, um, because it's, it's been, um it's not a great situation right now for, for biking, and certainly not for pedestrian access right there.
I'm grateful that you're making it a little bit more of a, I think, a pleasurable experience on the second floor north.
So.
Um, yeah, that's, that is something that I've, I've answered a lot of well, they, people have just vented at me, they haven't asked me anything, they just vent, you know? Uh, I, I could be a little anecdote, though, I, my son-in-law is a general contractor, and I've asked him about that, and he says, oh, you just gotta know how to do it, you just gotta know how to deal with Ogden. They have their own little way of doing things, and it, and so some guys learn how to do it. Uh, he sent my daughter down to get a permit for when they were building their house over there. She came home in tears, because it was so frustrating, so there, it, it's, it's just seemed like there, there needs to be a way to advocate for the customer rather than you know, just blurt out the rules, you know, and uh because some people just don't know what they're doing, and you know, so, so this is, this is a real happy, that, that's good news, so.
Yeah, and there are, uh, like, there are so many different project types that, that come to the second floor, so many, you know, different types, it's hard, it's hard to generalize, um, and so there could be, you know, several solutions, not just one, but like, trying to identify, and it's, it's hard, there's it's kind of, um, Janine knows this, about issue spotting, like, is a critical thing, because somebody comes up and just with a simple question about, well, trying to, trying to put this fence in, or, you know, and then and then it, you just have to keep asking questions, and that's what's hard about it, like, well okay, you know, what, what's, what's this part, you know, almost like, you almost feel like maybe you're being a little bit too intrusive, but you have to you, people, the question that people come with isn't always, like, certainly not, it's like, could be the tip of an iceberg of a much very more complicated, yeah, exactly, and so that's kind of part of that customer service training, is it's not always just that, that question that appears to be the one before you, but um, but how to how do you ask different questions, and um, so there's, there's, there's um just a lot of, a lot of training, but there's such a desire and a willingness to want to to really just knock it out of the park for people when they come, and it, it's complicated, because there's there's different project types and different scenarios, but we're, we're, um, I'm really pleased with the, the response that I've had, and the, and the desire and the willingness of um, like, pretty much all of the employees there have been have been interviewed, have had the chance to give their input about what they like, cert- like, what they do, but then what they see from their side are, are some of the of the issues, or the things that they'd even like to see improved, so we've kind of started with them, and we've said this isn't, we're not trying to be critical on anybody, there's no, there's no blame, and they're just, they've been really willing to share what they'd like to see improved, because they want it to be better, they really, they want, they want to provide the best service, so we're coming at it from them, and really hoping that, that the solutions are that those involved and are vested in it are, are also involved with the solutions, so we're not just.
I can imagine, I mean, I think that um, people should be required to like, wait tables or something in high school. Because customer service is so challenging, you know, I mean, on the other side too, it's like, you just realize, oh, this is like how people treat you sometimes, you know, because I know it probably goes off waves, it, they maybe have some negative interactions that are not great for them too, you know?
Right, that's true, and that's, that's part of, you know, customer service training, is how to deal with those difficult conversations, and like, we kind of talk about, how do you, that happens in all sectors of the city, but to make people feel more comfort with, and more comfortable in uncomfortable situations, and so, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to this, but um but I just, you know, I really just appreciate the staff is willing to to, you know, get involved, come up with solutions, and the department directors, but uh, of course, just overwhelmingly, we have one of the highest volume of projects going through our city, it's about five thousand a year, which is, you know, it's like, we're one of the bigger, so when we, when we talk to um, a lot of smaller cities are only handling like, a couple hundred, you know, projects a year coming in, but we, we have a, one of the highest volumes, um probably only Salt Lake has, you know, a much higher volume, but we're, we're trying to learn from cities that are comparable, comparable in Utah that have higher volume, what are some of the best practices, and um, where especially cities, it's hard to, you can't really look to national best practices, because Utah has its own laws and codes, and that is specific, but we're, we're in the process of researching best practices for comparable sized cities with that volume, there aren't that many, but, yeah.
Do, do we have a, a way, let, let's say a, a builder is, is doing something, and the inspector comes and says, oh, oh, you gotta do, you gotta do this thing, whatever this thing it might be. And I said, well, I just, it, it isn't in the approval, it isn't in anything, there a way for that that builder to appeal what the inspector's making them do?
Well, um, there, there might be, that's, I mean, yeah, as Jared's saying, yes, there is, but, you know, we talked about that scenario though, today, in fact, about how, how, because sometimes, I thought you were gonna say, sometimes you might have a project happening where um, an inspector goes out, and there hasn't been the correct approvals, and there's a stop work order, for example, but they just say come to the municipal building, but they don't tell them what they need to bring, and we're just like, how to be a little bit more customer friendly, here's the, here's what you actually need, so that you don't have to come back, like, like, we need your plan, we need your your this and that.
Now, the stories, the stories that I've heard were, um, yeah, this project was nearly done, and the inspector came and says, oh, you gotta put in a fire hydrant. And it was nowhere in the, in the approval.
Yeah.
And he could not get finalled until he put in a fire hydrant, it cost him five grand, and
Right.
And he was picked, and he was then and me.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, and, and whether that particular one, if there's an appeal process, or whether uh, that's again, one of those things that we want to have some as much as we can help uh, like, a customer foresee what the needs might be, like, through a checklist, or um, it's hard sometimes, but it, you know, like, that would be one that they might not have like, you know, if we, if they'd asked the right question, or if we, it's like, and remember that there's some fire suppression involved in this, as much as we can upfront, like, from our experience, make sure that um, that a customer or potential you know, is like, aware of all the steps that, that they're gonna need to take. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're trying to learn from our experiences of, you know, when that person came back, and and so that we know, okay, now let's remind everybody that there's, there's fire suppression, and uh, if, if they hadn't already thought about that, that, that's gonna come up, so. Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're just doing our best, but um um, that's pretty much all I had for today, just wanted to have that conversation to let you know that, that was, that was coming. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, Councilmember Myers?
Not a question, but just uh, an observation. With great interest, I have watched the city do some of the repaving through some of our residential neighborhoods this year, and just want to give a shout out to those guys. They efficiently did their job, and uh, I, I just purposefully watched to see how those crews were working, and, and I was very, very pleased just to see how they, and if there's any one person that I would want to shout, give a shout out to, it's Vince Ramels.
Oh, good, yeah.
He has uh, just been phenomenal in the way that he navigated those things and kept things moving forward, I don't know what his position is, but he has just been very responsive to a lot of issues, so.
He's our director over streets, and so he's the appropriate person to.
He's my guy.
Yeah, he, he um, manages that um division with all, all of the different employees there, and um, has crews like twenty-four seven in that division, like, doing different things, and um, is definitely an incredible employee, we're, I'm so appreciative of Vince, and um, I just emailed him back today, he's very responsive, we had, you know, he'll, he'll go and check out on a condition like himself, he'll go out there and, and then get back to you right away with his observations, or what the solution is, and um, just responsive both to to customers internally, externally, um, just a phenomenal asset to the city, so appreciate him, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other council business?
I was just gonna ask that, are we gonna talk about the parking stuff, maybe next, are we gonna talk about that at some point?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
So then we put up, we say we're putting cars on, I say a new story.
Maybe an update on, on that.
Yeah.
Sure.
I can give you a little update, um I, I did want to start by saying, again, you know, how much we appreciate David Sawyer and all of, all the work that he's done, you know, in, in the parking um uh realm for the last um, several years, he's been a tremendous um, asset to the city, and, and um, really, I mean, you know, like, just doing so much outreach, and working on the website, working on um, you know, questions, finding answers, just a tremendous amount to support um, the work that's gone into it, so wanted to recognize that, how much he's appreciated. And um, at the same time, we're going to, as the mayor said, and I can reiterate that, like um, kind of um, taking a pause at the mayor's request, which will involve um, a process, and we don't expect it to take a very long time, there's things that we need to move forward with, so we do have a parking structure going in that will have paid parking, and we have um pers- you know, we have things that are gonna be moving forward with that, no matter what, but especially with respect to the stakeholders on Twenty-Fifth Street, we want to have a more facilitated conversation with that group, and um, really, you know, drill down, and um, and, and have um, a discussion about, you know all their needs and observations, and so we're, we're going to be moving forward with that, we're right now um kind of identifying um, stakeholders on that block, and I'd welcome your input on that as well. And then we're going to have um, a facilitated conversation, so that we can, you know, be present as a city, and then listen to what um, they feel the challenges are, and, and, and some ideas that, that they may have for that block, but that's, that's gonna be our focus in the next um you know, month or, you know, a few weeks ahead, is to get that process established, and then, and then, you know, kick that off, but um you know, definitely, we're, you know, we've realized that there, there may be some that um, that had received communications before, but sometimes you don't always um, pay as much attention until it's kind of upon you, and that might have happened in a few situations, and there might have been some that, in truth, didn't, weren't aware, but a lot of different situations, but um, David have had, has had, you know, many, many conversations. Um, and, but we're, we're kind of, we're, we're going to be listening to the stakeholders on Twenty-Fifth Street.
All right.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other council business, Janine, that we need to have before?
Do your C I P rankings.
Yeah, C I P, I think a couple of them are done, right? Got a couple in, so.
Brace yourself, mine's done.
What? That's more than, sounds like it's more than two then that are done. All right, we're done, we're done. You're the three? You know who you are. All right, well, that, with that, we are adjourned, and uh
Grab your sandwiches too.
Grab your sandwiches before you leave.